Morning, everyone. Welcome to the Board of County Commissioners' regular meeting for July 2nd, 2024. If you'd stand and join me in the place, please. Thank you. Are there any additions to the agenda? Hearing none will approve the agenda. At this time, constituent time, is there anybody in the room that would like to address the board? Come up and state your name and address for the record and make sure the mic is on, please.
Great. Name's Larry Hudnall. I live at 3002 Ridge Road. This goes back to planning road and bridge, brutal subdivisions when things are, changes are made and they're not gone through with, and things are illegally signed off on, even though they're illegal and illegally placed. And I was told this by a department head and a commissioner was present. Concerns drainage at my place. And that's all I'll say, anyway. I was out correcting things this morning, man, I'm cleaning things up and that's what I do.
Is that from irrigating water or rainwater?
Uh, runoff from the bar ditches.
Oh, okay.
Uh, there's, the other culvert was never put in. The one that was put in was put in too deep and it's put in the wrong location. And the department head that signed off on placement of the culvert admitted to a commissioner who was there that it was legally placed and it was illegal. And I've spent a lot of money trying to remediate it. Bill Quintana brought in sixty yards of material to take care of erosion. I notified him email in the past, phone company and the county. And they don't do anything. And after this last episode, they did put a little gravel up there, but when the department had left, they removed everything.
And what address is this at?
3002 Bridge Road. Mesa Crest Estates, number one. There was supposed to be a second culvert put in, or they could alleviate everything if they just raised it up and made the ditch a little wider. It would have been nice. Versus a forty-foot ditch across my property. That's what all they would have had to do, would took care of debris, everything else. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Larry.
Anybody else in the room that would like to address the board? Okay, Chuck, come up and state your name and address, please.
Morning, ladies and gentlemen. Chuck Sherrod. Uh, 5607 2000 Road. Kind of oddly enough, I'm here kind of with the same thing. F Road's starting to really break up by the new concrete plant. And, uh, 2000's starting to, uh, get broken up. Now, that's was expected because of all the heavy traffic, you know, from the pit and everything. Um, but the turn onto G, that's starting to break up again, so you might get on the list and take a look at it. Because it's, F is getting real bad, um. And you may want to think, for whatever reason, to slow it down a little because people come through there sixty-five, seventy miles an hour. It's, um, you gotta be really careful there. But the road's starting to go south on us. I just thought I'd give you a heads up.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in the room that would like to address the board at this time? If not, is there anybody on the computer, Lindsey? Okay. We'll move on with, uh, the agenda. County Clerk Terry Stevenson.
Good morning, Commissioners. I have a minute for the June 18th, 2024 Board of County Commissioners' regular meeting. Are there any additions, changes, or variations?
I didn't see. Good to me.
Thank you. I also have, uh, your consideration of an application for Colorado would go to liquor sales room for the Storm Cellar LLC joint business as the Storm Cellar located, the location of the sales room is at 41586 Red Road in Paonia. This will be for July 21st from 5:00 PM till 9:00 PM. I have received all necessary documentation for the application. This will be for an on-premise consumption. Um, I would like to remind you that the application for the sales room um, should be granted unless issuance of the permit would impact the conditions listed on the, on the page, on page three of the application, which it does not look like this would impact any of that. Therefore, I would recommend.
I move the board approve the application for Colorado Liquor Sales Room for the Storm Cellar doing business as LLC, doing business as a Storm Cellar located at 41586 Red Road in Paonia for July 21st.
Second motion?
Motion is second on the floor. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye? So done. Thank you. We'll continue with, uh, Commissioner Business. First on the agenda is Hope West Program Manager Jenny Neal. Update regarding Hope West. So she's probably on her way. Okay. That will move her down until she arrives. Uh, next up, Delta County Assessor Jolene George.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
It's a pleasure to be here with you this morning.
You don't have to lie to us, do you?
Yep. I really enjoy it. Uh, I wanted to provide you all this morning with a report required by C R S 39810512 regarding the total taxable valuation of the county. Uh, the number of protests that we received at the assessor level for 2024 tax year. Uh, any allocated movable equipment through the county and, uh, persons or businesses who have filed, failed to file a personal property declaration so far in the tax year 2024. I'm in your packet materials. I've got a cover letter and then some pertinent information for that reporting. But the total actual value of taxable property in Delta County That's up about 1.4% from the reporting done this time last year. The assessed value is at $489,55,519. And that's actually down about 1.8%, uh, primarily because of changes in classification from, say, vacant land or residential status, so the assessment rate goes down quite a bit. Um, and then also from this time last year to this year, we've also had reduced assessment rates. So overall, it put, put us down about 1.8% year over year on assessed value. Um, these figures don't reflect the actual value reductions that we're going to be applying later this year. And that's in response to Senate Bill 24233. And what that does for 2024 tax years, it just re-implements last year's value reductions. So $55,000 off of each residential property and $30,000 off each commercial improved property. So those numbers with the reductions applied will come out in the certification and abstract in August. So you'll have revised numbers at that point. Um, of course, as you may know, 2024 is a intervening year and a two-year reassessment cycle, so we're not looking at a reappraisal this year. That'll come next year. Um, our appraisal date was June 30th of 2024 for this next cycle. So what's happening in the real estate market right now is what the next two years of values are going to be based on. So kind of take a snapshot of this time in history for next year. Um, so then, you know, I wanted to also address with you the fact that there's been a lot of change in property tax law, starting with Amendment B back in 2020, that took away that part of the Gallagher Amendment that required a forty-five, fifty-five split in statewide valuation for residential and commercial. And then we had, uh, following legislation to somewhat offset the tremendous increases in value that we saw last year. And so 2024 brings a lot of the same assessment challenges as we had last year with new, uh, legislation, things that are pretty difficult to implement. Um, and it could all change in November based on how the voters vote on the ballot measures, um, Initiative 50 and Initiative 108. If either of those pass, then Senate Bill 24233 goes away and we start a whole different plan. So that's makes for interesting times at the end of the year.
When are they officially on the ballot? How are they, have they been?
Fifty is on the ballot.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. To my knowledge, fifty is on the ballot, but 108 is still.
We, we have. Coordinator, but I haven't heard this name.
Okay, okay.
But officially on the ballot is.
Okay.
Perfect. Thank you.
Do date on that.
Thank you for that clarification.
Sure.
Um, this year, we received sixty-eight real property protests in the protest acceptance period, which started in January and went through June 10th. Uh, comparatively, the three years prior, we were pretty much on par for what's typical in an intervening year. Fifty accounts had evaluation adjustment. Fifteen accounts were denied. One protest was voided and two accounts were satisfied after speaking with the taxpayers. The voided protest was a matter of a titled manufactured home and land, and they protested the valuation of the land and not the home, but we put the protest on both. So that's, we voided the protest on the manufactured home. Um, as of the date of this report, there have been no personal property protests filed. Their deadline for filing was July 1st yesterday, but we could still potentially get something in the mail, so. Um, we have seventeen accounts, seventeen personal property accounts that have failed to file a personal property declaration with us. That's something that's done annually by all business taxable personal property owners. Uh, those declarations are due April 15th. And so seventeen that we've got outstanding so far. Um, in those situations, we usually do a best information available valuation um, and look at what they have reported in the past, so. The attachments to the cover letter include the protest log that gives the detailed account for each protest and how it was decided, uh, followed by a class abstract that just gives a breakdown of the values across the county. And then lastly, the list of, uh, businesses who have not filed a personal property declaration. So are there any questions that I could answer for the board?
Um, no, I, I, I just give kudos to you and your staff dealing with everything that's going on in the last seven months through the legislative session and all the, all the turmoil they've sent you through here trying to, trying to fix a problem that they couldn't end up fixing anyways, so. Um, so yeah, just, just thank you for, for you and all your time that you, you spent on that, because I know it was a, it was a headache, so.
Certainly. I appreciate that very much. We've got a good staff and, uh, takes, takes all of us to get it done, so appreciate that very much.
Thank you, Jolene.
Yes, you're welcome.
Yes, thank you. Tell your staff, thank you also.
I will do that.
Okay.
I'll move that the, uh, board, uh, accept the, uh, annual assessors report of assessed value of taxable property in the county.
Second.
Motion is second on the floor. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye. So done. Thank you.
This, Jen's here.
Okay. And you're with Hope West, Jen? Is that right? Okay, well, if you want to go ahead and come on up and, and address the board, you can, uh, state your name and address for the record and.
I'm Jenny Neal. My home address is 580 Sloan and Delta.
Okay.
Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you guys so much for having me come today.
Thank you for being here.
I just wanted to talk a little bit about Hope West. Of course, most of you know we're right here in Delta County. Our administrative offices are right across from the hospital. I'm going to just briefly talk about what we are at Hope West. You may go, I've heard that, but what does that mean? Well, we are a nonprofit hospice and palliative care provider as well as bereavement support. Uh, we are the only nonprofit on the western slope. Uh, but I'm going to talk specifically about Delta County, even though Hope West services Mesa County, Delta, Montrose, Meker, Plateau Valley. Um, but of course, Delta County is my home, so we're going to talk about that today. Our vision is to be the region's leading provider of serious illness and grief-related services through coordination of care, collaboration with community, and a commitment to sustainable solutions by proactively adapting, innovating, and responding to our aging population's needs today and in the future. The mouthful. So just a little overview of who we are. Um, we cover, um, all of Delta County regardless of where a patient lives. Uh, and we do cover some of Olafah as well. Uh, here in Delta, we cover, um, we serve about three hundred patients and their families a year. Um, hospice, generally speaking, is thought to be for those in the last six months of life, but none of us have a crystal ball. So Medicare gives us standards that we, um, our clinical providers look at, and that's how we determine a patient's eligibility. And that review of eligibility is ongoing because we are primarily funded through Medicare. Um, so we have patients that graduate off of hospice, which is often a celebration for them and their families. And then we have patients who are sometimes with us just days or hours, so it really can vary. Um, one of the things that I love to talk about is that we provide care for everybody, every terminally ill patient regardless of their ability to pay. Well, how do we do that? Good question. It's through the support of this wonderful community, through the support of the events, memorial donations, general donations. That's how we do it. Um, and one of the, I just want to leave you with a couple of things today, uh, to think about. Three main points. First one is you don't have to be referred by your physician. In fact, most of our patients come to us by way of self-referral. They hear about us, they're curious, um, and it's just a simple phone call. And they, um, talk through what's, uh, support they're needing, what services we offer, and then from there, we connect with their physician, uh, because hospice does require two medical providers to agree that the patient is terminally ill. Um, but it's very simple to get started, and I think we don't talk about that enough. Um, we want people to know, it's just a simple call to our number right here in Delta, and we'll link arms with you and help navigate. Um, so really simple to get started. Um, the second thing I want our community to know is that we offer bereavement support for everybody here in Delta County regardless of their connection with Hope West. Uh, in fact, our child and teen bereavement coordinator is often one of the first calls that are made when tragedy strikes our community. Claire, um, provides support to our schools, um, to our community organizations, and again, that's fully funded by philanthropy. And I can't say enough, they don't have to be affiliated with Hope West. Um, so of course, we provide bereavement support for those families we've served, but also the community at large. And the third thing is the one that I already spoke about, but I can't say it enough times, is we provide care for anyone regardless of their ability to pay or qualify for insurance. In fact, it's not even one of the questions we ask. Um, so that's something that we've done ever since Hope West was started here in Delta County in nineteen ninety-nine. Uh, and there, we're very determined to keep that pledge to our communities. So you may be asking, well, how can I help? This sounds like such a wonderful organization. Easy. Maybe you know we have heirlooms here in Delta. That's my favorite way to support. You can shop at heirlooms, of course, donate at heirlooms. All of those proceeds stay right here in Delta County. I think that's important to talk about. Uh, same with donations, events, et cetera. All of that money stays here in Delta County. Hope West is pretty determined to keep that regional. Um, the word is gone. Anyways, because when, when we donate, we want that money to stay in our communities, and so that's how we are structured as an organization. The second way is just to continue to support when you see a Hope West event. Um, come, that, again, that money goes to support us here, right here in Delta County. And finally, tell your friends. It's not a topic that often comes up, um, but you'd be surprised the impact that can be made just by you talking about Hope West and what you've heard about it. Any questions?
Thank you for all the jobs you do and the people you work with. I'm sure appreciate that because it's a trying time at that time of their life for that individual and for the families involved, so it's kudos to you and your staff for all that you do.
Thank you.
We, we all know someone that's been helped by your services and, and, and know what a benefit it is to the, to them and their families, so thank you very much.
I'd like to add, I sat on the ward for seven years and they have an amazing staff. Their staff there is so caring and generous and just a very, an amazing staff, so.
And I have to say, Jenny, that another way people can help is by volunteering.
Yes.
And so that is a passion of mine for Hope West, and I'm going to volunteer for close to five years, so, um, in many capacities, you can, um, volunteer at the store, which I love. I, I call it one of the most expensive volunteer jobs you can have, but it is very because walking out there, there are a lot of great things, but you're also completing a people volunteering at the store. And also, anything little from sitting with people and just chatting. So I deliver a birthday collection, which takes anywhere from twenty to thirty minutes of your time, and but it makes a huge impact to somebody's birthday, their special day, so especially when they don't have anybody in their life. So there's a lot of different ways that you can make an impact.
Absolutely. I want to be a Hope West volunteer when I grow up. Actually, most of us employees are volunteers as well. We have about twenty employees. Um, that consists of, um, nurses, CNAs, uh, admin, admin staff, but we have over a hundred and sixty volunteers just right here in Delta County. And like Lindsay said, they are, we call them the heart of our organization because they, um, man, they're incredible. I could go on and on about that. Thank you, Lindsay. And thank you so much for your support of our upcoming, upcoming gala. We greatly appreciate that as well.
You're welcome. Thank you.
All right.
Yeah, fourth of the century.
Yeah.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Yeah, you bet.
Don, turn the air back a little.
Yeah.
Never turn it off.
Been beautiful.
Yeah.
Morning, Sheriff.
Okay. Uh, next up, we have board's consideration to ratify the chairman's signature on the cost allocation certificate and indirect cost rate. And Leon, yes, are you?
Good morning. Um, uh, we have recently completed our cost allocation plan regarding 2023 business. And the little chart that I have provided for all of you um, shows you, first of all, on the left, what indirect costs that, um, the county provides to human services. Uh, human services is usually supported eighty-twenty by this date, but the feds then turn around and any indirect cost provided to the, to the county uh, by the county to human services is given an additional thirty percent starting in 2022 of the difference of the total cost less, uh, reimbursement rates. Some of the expenses that went up in 2023 uh, was the county attorney's office providing services to human services. And John could probably speak to that with the businesses, the business that has increased over there. Um, our depreciation of our built, the new building has, um, increased a little bit. And, uh, uh, IT services and some administration, um, mainly due to salary increases in 2023. But my understanding that court support provided by the county attorney's office to human services is, um, takes a lot of time. So to that end, we are going to receive, um, thirty percent of the indirect cost rate, which for 2025 will be, well, starting July of 2024, because the state year ended June 30th and the new state year end begins this month, will be, uh, $279,968 reimbursed from the feds to directly to the county on a quarterly basis, which is about seventy thousand per quarter. So I'd like to certify the chairman's signature of the certificate of cost allocation plan and the indirect cost for 2023.
Yeah, I'll, I will make that motion. I'll move that, uh, board ratify the chairman, oh, did you say something? So, sorry. I'll move that the board ratify the chairman's signature on the, uh, cost allocation plan certificate and indirect cost rate.
Second.
Motion is second on the floor. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye. So done. And next up.
Did you have?
Good work.
Okay. The, um, next item up, I'm here for Linda Reeves on this one, uh, is the board's, uh, signature to ratify the services provided by the veteran service at the county and, uh, authorizing the veteran service to reimburse county force, partial, uh, part of Linda's Reeves, um, services for veterans in our county.
I'll move that the board, uh, ratify the chairman's signatures for the veteran affairs application for the semi-annual payment.
Second.
Motion is second on the floor. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye. So done. Thank you, Leon.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Next up is board's consideration of resolution enacting regulations permitting the lawful possession of firearms on Delta County government property as authorized by Senate Bill 24131.
So as you guys are aware, the, uh, state legislature in, uh, in standard fashion adopted several gun bills. Um, this one had to do with, uh, have possessing a gun on certain properties that they, that they claimed, which would also include staff that has a concealed carry license or just about any app, application that you could imagine having a gun. Um, and the, and the, the bill, little, little bit oversteps. So I had conversations with sheriff, county attorney. Um, several other counties in the, in the state have adopted this resolution. So, um, the, the challenge is, is it's a, it's a class one misdemeanor if you get, if you get caught with a gun knowingly on these, in these places. And it just, just a little bit of extremes, so Sheriff, did you have anything to add or?
Morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
No, I agree with Commissioner Supas, uh, fully on this, uh, resolution. I, uh, anytime we can fight back and, uh, and, and protect our second amendment rights, I think we need to do so. So I applaud the Commissioners for considering this.
I'm all in support of this one.
John, did you have anything to add to that?
Not, I mean, only that, um, the bill is kind of a, uh, take away and then give a little bit back having the situation. So what this resolution does is it takes advantage of the, um, the part of that takeback that, that, the authorization that the board has to allow carrying firearms on certain county properties, and that's really all this addresses, and that's all that this bill addresses. Um, and so specifically on, uh, page two or three, and at the bottom of the language, um, those are the areas that the bill allows, um, the county commission to, um, authorize, permitting, I guess is the term, uh, to permit, um, carrying firearms. So that's really what this does. It kind of takes that and does, does, does what we can do.
Okay. Uh, I just want to thank, thank John and, and the sheriff for, for working with us on this to get it, get it where we're at and um, there may be future, future work sessions that need to be done to, to address this issue further, so.
I move the board approve Resolution Number 20-
I move the board approve resolution number twenty twenty-four R fourteen, a resolution enacting regulations permitting the lawful possession of firearms. On Delta County government property as authorized by Senate Bill twenty-four one thirty-one. Under Colorado revised statute eighteen twelve one oh five point three, subpart four, subpart B.
I second the motion.
Motion is second on the floor. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
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 Aye, so done.
Thank you, Sheriff.
We have the new BLM director, if you'd like to come up.
Well, good morning.
Good morning. How are you?
Good. So today is the third annual National Wildland Firefighter Day. So if you um, we cooperate together on wildfire suppression and if you know any. You know, just reach out to them and thank them for their service. I think they picked this date mainly because this is when fire season can be. Pretty brutal and I think we've all lived with some pretty smoky summers, whether there was bull draw or low line last year in Gunnison, believe it or not. That fire burned um quite a few acres and so anyway, just wanted to start off the day. I'm Stephanie McCormick. I'm the district manager for BLM Southwest Colorado. So my district area is that Cortez, Durango, Silverton, Gunnison, up to Montrose, Delta, that part of the the state. And I'm here because I want to introduce you. I've been around for over six years, but Dan is new um in his role. He started yesterday. So you all are getting him on day two. As the brand new field manager for the Bureau of Land Management Uncompagri Field Office. But he's not a stranger to our issues or or the items of Delta County and um if you want to.
Yeah.
Take a few minutes to introduce yourself and then maybe find a couple of things I wanted to share with them.
Yeah. Good morning Commissioners.
Thank you for coming by.
Yeah, of course. Um, yeah, like Stephanie said, it's today is day two for me in uh. In the Uncompagri Field Office, but I am no stranger. I've been in Western Colorado for almost eight years now, working out of the Grand Junction Field Office. But um, live out, I uh live in Whitewater, so it's just I'm I'm commuting now down to down to Montrose, so. Be a mood for myself and my family, but it's really great to be here. I know. Public lands out here in Delta County are some of the most public spectacular public land resources that we have on the western slope and. As shown in the photographs behind you there, that those are some of the highlights of BLM lands around western Colorado. Uh, but yeah, really great to meet you here and uh very excited to be working with you all moving forward here and. Robbie and I have been working together for wow, over eight years now, we going back to uh the Dominguez Escalante Resource Management Plan that Robbie was so helpful on. Um, but yeah, um, lot going on with the the Montrose office. I'm really looking forward to diving in.
And your last name, Dan?
My last name is Ben Horan.
So um, I will say his swearing in by the state director will be down um on the BLM lands adjacent to. Pleasure Park, isn't that right?
Yeah.
We'll send you the invitation. That's going to be July twenty-fifth in the afternoon. We know it's hot, but he's actually going to be swearing in another field manager of the Grand Junction Field Office Stacy. Um, she's new to her position. As well, so he's got two swearing ins that day. But um, and then the other date I wanted to point out was the Southwest Rack. Um, we're going to be in your area August seventh and eighth. We're going to be taking the resource advisory council members out to take a look at areas of critical environmental concern. And try to um, share with them the process that the BLM has on. The importance and relevance criteria and how we go about whether or not um you would consider an area of critical environmental concern. And that's just some foundational work we want to do with our resource advisory council. Because we are updating the Uncompagri Field Office Resource Management Plan. It's currently being amended and you all are operating agency. On that and there seems to be a lot of interesting questions about how ACECs are. Um, identified or designated, so we're going to spend some time in the field together in Delta County taking a look at those. Um, I think some other news just real quick. Uh, you all have been cooperating agencies on the Gunnison Sage grouse Resource Management Plan Amendment. We're going to be rolling out the final EIS and the proposed on Friday. So um, we appreciate the support you've had as a cooperating agency on that. And then on the Uncompagri um Resource Management Plan Amendment. I think last I read Angela's trying to coordinate dates with the cooperating agencies to. Do a rollout of the administrative draft and have them take a look at that before we go public with the draft EIS. So that's where we are on some pretty important processes for your area. And I'm glad you're here because you are also on my list. Make sure you get to know Dan, given our residing on public lands and chronic dumping problems. Not just in Delta County, obviously, but um other parts of our district as well. So we're looking forward to working with you. And then an update on that is, you know, the BLM, um, we are going to be hiring in another ranger. We're in the process and um they'll either be duty stationed out of Montrose or Durango depending on. Who the best qualified candidate, but they are going to be providing some supervisory oversight to our ranger program and and they'll be reporting to me directly. In the past, um, the Rangers have been reporting directly to the field managers, but they've decided to change the structure a little bit with that. And Colorado is one of the last states to move over to the new structure. So those are a few tidbits um related to your part of the state and do you all have any questions for us or for Dan, more important for Dan?
So just real quick, the the new ranger will serve.
Southwest.
Southwest.
Entire district.
The entire district, not just the OFO, okay.
And here's here's how it's a benefit to Delta County. Um, right now we have Sam, one ranger for this area. And but we also have a ranger over in Gunnison. We have one in Canyons of the Ancients and we also have one in Durango. Um, and but we have this donut hole in Silverton, so that's why I was flexible, whether they're in Montrose or Durango, just for proximity to the Alpine Loop. But they are going to be a supervisor, so they're a working supervisor. So in theory, then they can double up with Sam. Or any other of the Lone Rangers that are out there, you know, to pair up and help them make some of those important contacts. And we really appreciate the support we get out of the county because I know that you all know this, you know, sending an individual in at this day and age and some of these. Issue areas is not the most comfortable spot for me as a supervisor, so really happy to get an additional um ranger. On the team and um I think it would be good for them to have someone locally that is a law enforcement officer supervising them. So, any questions about that?
Stephanie, I really appreciate the time you guys are spending here and Dan, on your second day in this new position, we wish you the best in your challenges.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Delta County really does respect and value the relationship we have with the BLM and our federal partners. It's important to us.
We we really feel it and we really appreciate all levels of the partnering, whether it's us working on dumping issues all the way up to resource management plans. And I'm signed up to be part of the tire event in August, so looking forward to whoever's going to be there. And I can, I can lift those tires. I just did one for Montrose County. It's a good day, so looking forward to that.
Yeah, we had a bountiful day on that uh public lands cleanup day.
Never a loss for things to pick up on the land. And you know, we are really sensitive to that. We we need more resources to work together. Because there's many avenues of being successful with the anti-dumping. It's not. Cleanup's important, but we also need the law enforcement. We need the education. We need the marketing of some um ways in which we talk to people that resonates with them. Why it's not a good culture to set up for a community and um and then, you know, of course, like I said, continued with the volunteering, so. Anyway, appreciate your support on that. We want to be a good neighbor and and it's a lot to try to keep up with.
Yes, thank you very much and all your efforts. It's a big area to cover, but uh we feel that. With our cooperation and yours working together that we can benefit the land and the people and and help some of the issues that are along there. So welcome.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you Stephanie. Thank you Dan for coming.
You're welcome.
Appreciate the time and reach out.
I'm going to give you a card.
That's great, Wendell. Thanks.
Thank you.
There you go. We'll make sure you're in the seat down. Thanks.
We'll see you guys soon, I'm sure.
I'll be noted that that topic was not on the agenda, but uh. Oh, okay, it wasn't on the agenda of Commissioner Business, but they did have a nine o'clock appointment. Thank you.
We've got item number six to do.
Yeah. Right. Board's consideration of contractor phase two miners trail construction.
Um, Delta County went out for an RFP on segments one and two of the miners' trail. We had one bidder. Conci, they came in at one million two hundred ninety-one, six hundred fifty-five dollars and seventy cents. Um, as required by CDOT, we've got a contract here with um Conci. They've already signed it. Uh, once we get uh a contract with them, we can start doing the uh value engineering and. Getting this dialed into where it needs to be. So this is a continuation from phase one, which is segments three, four, five.
Well, thanks for all your hard work on this. Uh, Commissioner Coons said it was a long drawn out pop. Process, a lot of meticulous detail going into this, working with John Bear and his uh his office on getting the easements. And and to get this miners' trail going and a construction project like this. Seemed like it'd be easy just to put a trail through, but uh. Do it right so that it will last. There's a lot of details in it and thank you.
So what what is the what is the CDOT grant amount?
This is six eighty-seven, five hundred, and we've got some from Gates Family. And we're working on an additional two hundred and fifty um from CDOT's mains revitalizing Main Street.
Okay. So you've got a lot of a lot of value engineering.
We do on this. We do.
Okay.
First step, though, we can't do any change orders until we get a contract and CDOT accepts it.
Okay. Leave it to CDOT to make it difficult. Okay, well, I will move that uh board approved unauthorized chairman to sign the contract for phase two of the miners' trail construction with Conci.
I'll second and this one's actually got my name on it.
Oh, okay, sorry. And authorize uh and amend my motion to authorize uh Commissioner Coons to sign.
Second.
Motion is second on the floor. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
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 Aye, so done. Thank you.
Give that to you.
Next up, uh, review of our BOCC schedule with Lindsay.
Happy almost July fourth. This afternoon, we have the Republican Party meeting from six to eight P M. That's at Circus Creek Church. On the fourth, we uh all Delta County administrative offices are closed. And the balloon festival kicks off on Friday, July fifth in uh. City of Delta. That goes through um July seventh. All are planning on attending, but I did stick that on the calendar. The next meeting I have um for the Commissioners' calendars, Tuesday, July sixteenth. Which will be our next Board of County Treasury regularly scheduled meeting. At one to three that day, I have a UVWA meeting for that is virtual. And three thirty to five P M that day, a Board of Health meeting up by South Street. Wednesday, July seventeenth, nine A M to one thirty P M, AGNC, so headboard meeting. Three thirty to six thirty P M, open house for Rogers Mesa Project, Baymont, Los Angeles. Thursday, July eighteenth, seven to eight A M, coffee with Commissioner Wendell Coons. That's at Bullis Park in Peonya. It's open to the public. And the coffee will be provided by Drive Brew Coffee out of Koshkis. One is welcome to that. Friday, July twenty-sixth. Six to eight thirty P M is a community barbecue to kick off the twenty twenty-four fair. That will be at the county fairgrounds in Koshkis. Uh, is hosted by the Minnners. They will be barbecuing camera glitters. Free for people in the community to enjoy, so please check our Facebook. Name for more information.
Uh, twenty-third, at one thirty is the uh ribbon cutting for Garnet Garnet Mesa Solar.
I'll be at Club Twenty, July eleventh and twelfth, and again on twenty-five and twenty-six. Uh, working hard to get back from New Club, it's Community Night.
God, you better hurry.
I'll be pedaling as fast as I can.
Twenty-five Mesa Road will be open. You'll be good.
Uh, it's a good thing I don't be using a gas powered truck, not an electric car.
Uh, on July eleventh, Thursday, um, they have scheduled a farmer rancher appreciation day on July eleventh. At the Delta Sales Yard, starting at eleven in the morning.
Uh, for the Board of Health on the sixteenth, that is Karen's retirement. Anybody could make it would be welcome.
Thank you, Lindsay. Next up is planning at ten o'clock. Followed by County Attorney John Bear, so we'll recess until ten o'clock. Welcome back, everybody. It's ten o'clock and now the time for planning, so we'll turn it over to Keith.
Today we have a PLN two-two dash zero four five Sherose Painted Vineyard. This is to consider an indemnity agreement for Sherose as required by the Board of Adjustment Resolution. Um, and staff is recommending that the board uh kind of commissioners consider this indemnity in group agreement. Um, and authorize the chair to sign the agreement on behalf of Delta County. And if it's here, if you guys have any specific questions in regards to this agreement, as it does have to do with um the road bridge standards.
And any other background on this week?
Um, I can give you a brief overview if you want.
The staff report's excellent, just.
I have a question for you. I mean, it's, it it's a gate. I mean, we allow gates. You know, we we, you know, we have thirty-five foot setback from from structures. I mean, are why is there a reason we're classifying this as a structure instead of a gate or?
Um, the the road and bridge standard states thirty-five feet. The gate has to be thirty-five feet from the edge of traveled way. And the purpose is that is is to, that way when you have vehicles stopping to open the gate, that they're not parked in the road. To uh block traffic, so.
And this gate has, I think, for stone pillars.
Yeah. Um, if you if you look at exhibit one, so the the red rectangle rectangles are stone pillars. So they would be difficult and a little expensive to move was part of um the variance. Future right away for um Back River, if we acquire it, would be forty or. Would be eighty total, forty each side of center line if we were to improve that road. Which would then the, I believe the gate would be in the right way at that point, but that's a future issue that we're not dealing with at this point. a future issue that we're not dealing with at this point.
And they constructed it not being aware of setbacks.
I believe they purchased the property after the gate was installed. I believe is how it happened.
And that's what they had explained the planning was that when they purchased the property, those were already installed.
I mean, it, it's setback from the existing right of way, so I mean, it's, you know, that's a
The standard was there for safety purposes, in my opinion, so, but you guys can approve or disapprove that. If you would like to proceed.
And the indemnification will just be on Delta County if and when that road is ever upgraded.
Right. Well, the owner has to replace the gate, I believe. It's been a minute since I've read this, so.
John Bear reviewed this.
Yes, John did. And the Sheros' attorney also reviewed it, signed off on it.
I, I guess, I guess it's, it's more of a an issue of, of being consistent with our code than anybody. Because.
Yeah, there's probably hundreds of gates that are not set back, you know, along the areas.
The road and bridge standards also stated that any change of use of an access requires a new permit, which this was a change of use. This was a residential and now it's a vineyard, so that required a new permit, which that's how I figured out the gate was not to the setback is they um required a new permit, access permit.
With a tasting room.
And yeah, there's a tasting room, restaurant and a bed and breakfast, I believe.
Well, good on the Sheros people, folks, for following the, following the rules here, doing the right thing.
Yep.
I, I, I mean, I, I, I understand the process. I, I understand what, what took place. My, my question is, is you know, is there do we need to, do we need to consolidate spots in our code here to try to avoid this because you know, it, it, like Mike says, I mean, if, if it's a thirty-five foot setback to a gate, I, I wouldn't want to count how many how many gates we have that are out of compliance here. So.
I think the main issue with this one is, is the style and the, the pillars, which made it expensive to move.
I also think the location in relation to the Black Bridge is part of the other issue. It's a one lane bridge and it's, it is not safe. And their property is just on the other side of that. Um so if they have deliveries to the vineyard, you have a truck pulling out, blocking the roadway. I mean, I think it is essentially for safety standards more than anything else.
And we wanna avoid another big B's access issue.
And one of the conditions in there, it's a limited use permit, is that the gate remain open during business hours. But I don't know how we enforce that, but.
I, like I said, I'm just
Yeah.
I, I'm, I'm trying to think of the future. You know, every time one of these comes up, it's, it, it's just one of those questions, so.
I've seen multiple gates that aren't covered, but.
Well, the only reason this got looked at so hard is because of the change of use that they were proposing. So, I mean, we're not going out into the county and trying to look for the gate that aren't meeting the standards, but when they come in to apply for a permit, that's part of the review is to make sure that they are in compliance with the standards. And if they can't be met, that's what the variance department is for.
Like I said, that's those, those are just, just my concerns. I don't know that I have an answer for the, yeah, for the solution, for the situation, but just uh
Well, I, I'll go ahead and start on this one. I move the board to accept and authorize the chair to sign PLN twenty-two dash zero four five Sheros uh Painted Vineyard, uh the indemnity agreement uh as required by the Board of Adjustments Resolution.
Second.
Motion is second on the floor. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
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 I do like the staff reports.
Okay, the only item I have for you today.
Okay.
Thank you, Kay. Thank you, Tim.
Thank you. Uh next on the agenda is County Attorney at ten thirty. So we'll recess until ten thirty. Welcome back. It's ten thirty and now time for County Attorney John Bear.
Thank you. Uh good morning, Chairman. Good morning, Commissioners. I have two items on my agenda for the board's consideration this morning, both of them being uh airport uh hangar related at Lakefield. The first one is the board's consideration of an airport ground lease for Lakefield Hangar number three thirty-five. This is with Highland Properties eighteen twenty-four LLC. Uh you will notice in your packet, you have uh one additional uh document in there, and that's an addendum. This is uh a little, well, it's out of the ordinary. I, I've not seen us do this uh in whether or not it's been done in the, kind of, long ago, I don't know. Um this is a ten thirty-one exchange for uh Jim and Michelle Willer. Um and so the LLC that, that is actually um the let's see on this particular hangar, uh it's kind of a holding, it's really a holding company for the purposes of their tax uh for the ten thirty-one exchange. Um and so the concept here is that this LLC will hold this for a period of time. Um they're actually gonna lease it back to the Willers so that the Willers can build the hangar using their uh their tax benefited uh uh monies from the, the exchange or the sale of their property. Um and then once the hangar's all done, then we'll, we'll do an assignment of lease to the Willers. And, and so we're, we're looking at probably right at the end of the year. I, I've been, I've had numerous conversations with um with people with the ten thirty-one exchange company uh with the Willers as well. So just so you know, that's why you have that extra document. The last information I had was that their property that is being sold was supposed to close yesterday. So at this point, we do not have the prorated uh value money for two thousand twenty-four yet. Um I'm presenting it to the board, asking you to approve it, but I'm gonna hold on to it, not record it until we get that prorated, three hundred and sixty-six dollars. It's the prorated amount for two thousand twenty-four, so. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer that.
You want us to make that contingent or?
Um you sure can in the motion to approve, uh you know, you can direct me to hold it, not record it until, uh yeah, I think that would be fine. So I don't have any reason to think they won't come through. They've been very engaged.
Yeah.
It'll be two documents to sign.
Uh it's the, it's the lease itself and then the addendum to the LCS, which is immediately behind that.
Okay.
Well, I'll move the board approve both the airport ground lease and the addendum and authorize the chair to sign for a Delta airport, I'm trying to find, uh with Highland Properties LLC. Uh not a long one. And contingent upon receipt of funds um prior to executing this. Uh second motion.
Motion is second on the floor. Any further discussions? If not, all of the papers say aye.
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 So if you can attest those and then take it back and or record it after we get Thank you. Thank you. I have one other item for the board's consideration. Um this is an assignment of lease, board's consideration of an assignment of lease. Uh Lakefield Airport Hangar number two four, two ninety-five. This is uh Finch uh to Newman. You have that. This is a really straightforward document that you all uh typically see in these situations.
Well, I'll move that the uh board uh authorize the uh assignment of lease at Lakefield Airport Hangar, Hangar two ninety-five from Finch to Newman. Second.
Motion is second on the floor. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
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 Thank you. That's all I have for you this morning.
Okay, thank you. Is there anything else need to come before the board?
I'm done.
Okay, we'll stand adjourned, Dan. Thank you.